And stocks. So it's get the minister here. All rise. You all now ask for a citizens to be heard if any of their assistance in the chamber you would like to come forward and be heard. You have three minutes. Please come forward and state your name. And you have a microphone on that table. My name is Montez. Okay.
Uh, we got you. Uh, what we did today on behalf of my work and standing and so there. For a new one point three diet, you can be the next. Uh, when we were getting people putting care of the climbing for this event and we're just giving the visitors a good pass. The major website to hit the channel. And the only act of the process was the time we posted five nine twelve. In fact, it was on a week where the back was active on the Van County Special Event near the desert. And so at that time, uh, end of November, which December, we downloaded that we had working to open. Working on the requirements for all women's training, including the rest of the country. In that format, I have a popular dinner, a party in that order, you say about the year. Uh, it states that the deadline is to contribute from there to there in a hundred twenty years, no later than a hundred twenty years. Part of you. And so during March, December, we pull on the committee here and during our research camp, I was getting a man in. And we got together, you know, January and we spent about a week. And then he sent a funny back to give an easier to the first one to get out. And then she called me the next year. And he stated that we had missed the deadline for the immune event of the exposure. Uh, go to the new form. And I was surprised and I said, well, he followed him going to find it up top, it's still active in the area instead of a hundred twenty eight times. And she left and she ordered me a meal, you know, or in six minutes. And in that order, it states that for a four or two exam. That all information to the permanent use of the end of October, first Monday in October of this Friday. So it was advanced, you can point three, if you have any nearby October. Uh, I don't look at it, the ordinance can, you know, the ordinance actually did not adopt it. So I hope they're not coming to talk about this scenario. The first thought that had been it did not impact. Uh, the ordinance is adopted after the deadline after the next. It did not eliminate the north of the mountain enough to, you know, it's four of them, it's four of the two of them. Have a form of freedom, we felt like the ordinance is adopted after the deadline. So we have sent the community climate energy, we have looked at different and our we could pass. And I'd let you, we talked to the community, we talked to the community, we then do. Uh, we found out that many video factors, you know, where we can't find it down and that's the thing we have to do more than that. Given that that off the city hall, the new media and factories, I like to use the T P. Except our I C R as example of by address. Allows you forward with a certain block. You can tell you always come up with, you can review all the events and then you can incorporate any video factors and commit them into your.
May have. So that's why I've come here today and I appreciate your time.
All right. Yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Yes. Um, do we have anyone else who would like to come forward to the citizen to be heard? In the chambers here? How about on YouTube? Is there anyone on or not YouTube? I'm sorry, anyone on Zoom who would like to be heard? If so, you can unmute and just introduce yourself. Unmute. All right. It looks like we don't have anyone else to be heard. So we will proceed with our presentations today. Our first presentation will be the Utah Support Advocates for Recovery Awareness. That's you, Sarah. If you all would like to come forward, uh, thanks for being here.
You mind if I state some preface?
Oh, no, absolutely. Go ahead.
So I invited Lynette and Heidi here today because we do have this um, distribution for our opioid. Well, how do we state this, Stephen? Um, settlement. Thank you. And so my, my recommendation was that we provide it to you, Sarah. And so I, I recommended that they come and just tell us a little bit about what they do.
Thank you.
Great.
Right. And so then again, on behalf of you, Sarah, as a whole, we want to say thank you for the incredible opportunity and consideration today. My name is Lynette Dunn. I have lived in Moab most of my life. I come from a generational poverty background and started struggling with stuff since you said a very early age. For those of you that have lived here for a long time, you know that it wasn't until recently that Moab, Moab has really started gaining resources and compassion. Around what has become now known as a worldwide epidemic. During my lifetime of addiction, my substance use and behaviors were treated as a crime or a moral wrongdoing. I was treated solely on behavior cognitive change and past trauma. And I spent a lot of time in jails and detention. And when I was done with treatment or my sentence, uh, now with all these added barriers like felonies, no job and lack of resources. I didn't have the capacity or the resources or the wherewithal to do things differently. I always went right back to the same toxic environment with the same toxic people and ended up always doing the same toxic things. Which ultimately always just led right back to the same old addictions. I lived like this for several years, most of my life. I could not find my way out of the cycle of addiction. In 2013, a recovery organization came rallying into town, talking about how recovery was possible and that hope. Compassion and healthy connection for the secret to getting and staying recovered. This was a concept that I had never heard of before and I longed for healthy connections. Later that year, you sorrow was established in Moab, Utah. In July of 2014, I was back in treatment again, but this time it was different. I had a recovery leader, someone that I knew was in recovery, that I could actually watch them do what I always believed to be impossible. And then I became their participant. And this individual used her lived experience and what she had overcome and it gave me hope and purpose. We focused on things like safety and immediate needs and she helped bridge me to resources to get all these things met. Like housing, how to appeal for housing, the pro, the, the appeal process and food. We focused on my strengths and my confidence as well as barriers and challenges. And she sat with me through each one of these, all at the same time teaching me that I was capable of getting through barriers and challenges and that it worth it. She helped me build healthy connections, strong recovery supports, find healthy hobbies. And I have built a strong, long lasting foundation because of, because of it. Today, I am a woman in long-term recovery since July 27th, 2014. It has been almost nine years now since I put a substance into my body. Today, my recovery means that I am a happy, healthy individual that is capable of anything that I set my mind to. I'm a present parent to my children today. I'm the best grandma to my grandchildren. Today I get to suit up and show up for myself and for others in ways that I never thought possible. And today I get to use my lived experience to give others hope and purpose and I get to recover out loud. Today I get to meet people where they are, while at the same time, if they're not ready just yet for recovery. Giving them tools to keep them safe until they are. Today I get to carry the peer support torch and pay it forward while showing up. There's the B two or we're the incapable of the same kind of life that recovery has provided for me. Besides focusing on empowering individuals, purpose, strengths, recovery supports, barriers and challenges. You sorrow also rallies for stigma reduction in communities and person-first language. We hold annual awareness events statewide such as Recovery Day. Um, September 2nd will be Moab's ninth annual Recovery Day celebration. Overdose awareness. This one will be Moab's third. And National Take Back Day, which we actually just partnered with law enforcement and had our first one and it was very successful. Next week, you sorrow will be advocating for recovery and law and change at the Capitol and help at a legislative level. And then even as recently, we became part of a building community of recovery grant that allows us to not just. Um, support folk in Moab and work with law, but we've taken on someone as well.
So I mean, my name is Heidi. I'm a woman in long-term recovery as well as a peer support specialist with you, Sarah. Utah Support Advocates for Recovery Awareness. I first heard of you, Sarah, in 2017, shortly after I moved here to Moab. I'd been struggling with the substance use disorder for many years and I just lost custody of my daughters. I was living unsheltered, lost my license, was without a job and had no family support or social connection. I felt completely defeated. I started meeting with Lynette. Who was a peer support specialist with you, Sarah. She helped me build motivation to make goals in these and other areas of my life as well as connected me to proper resources to reach them. Today I get to use my lived experience to help others on individual basis to build their own recovery capital. In each of these following domain, domain, wife domains. Along with some examples of how I have built them up along the way in my journey. And so we focus on transportation. For me, I went from walking to riding a bike and eventually regaining my license and getting a vehicle. Housing and home, I moved from a tent to an RV, then to a motel and into my own home. Budgeting and money management. I've been able to pay off all my past debts and now have a savings account that I add to monthly. Employment and educational vocational training. After volunteering with you, Sarah, for about a year and a half, I was able to go through CPSS training and was offered a position with you, Sarah. Relationship and social support. I'm able to have healthy relationships today and was even able to reconnect with my daughters after four and a half years. Mental and physical wellness. I'm healthier than I've ever been and continue challenging myself in these areas of my life. Recreation. We offer social activities like bowling, game nights, barbecues, hikes and many other fun activities monthly. Because for me, I really noticed how the opposite of addiction is connection and together we are stronger. Legal. Other than going into running meetings, I haven't been to jail for over five years. Spirituality and mindfulness. I strive to be mindful and present in every situation that I'm in today and I practice daily meditation and prayer. And overall recovery, I have almost five years of recovery and live a life today that I no longer want to run or know from. We also offer many mutual support meetings each week, including our craft meetings. That is community reinforcement and family training. It's a program designed to specifically support family members of those struggling with substance use disorder. I tried so hard many times in my life before to change my life and was not able to do it on my own. I'm so grateful for the knowledge and support I received along the way. I feel completely honored to be able to pass that along to others in the community. Thank you guys again for having me.
Yeah, thank you all so much for your, for your testimony and yeah, letting us know a little bit about what you sorrow does.
Really appreciate it. So yeah, I think we're just gonna have a little bit further discussion and we'll let you know. But we so appreciate it and everything you guys do.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I think it's very brave on you ladies' part to step up here. That's not easy and just want to acknowledge it. Proud of you.
Thank you so much. That's part of like what we get through, we're gonna show others it's possible and that it can be done and we can stay recovered. So, thank you. Thanks guys.
Thank you.
All right. Our next presentation is Dominion Energy Natural Gas Expansion to Green River.
Three minutes?
Oh, no, yes, you have, you have fifteen if you want to use them all. All right, great.
We're here more for information than anything, but.
Thank you.
As far as expansion goes, um, I think we took over the Utah gas system quest started in about 2020. So we've been operating that for about 20 years. Received funding a few years ago, we expanded Eureka, um, kind of like sandings on the west side. And then the last project we did was now Goshen in Alberta. And so we have some funding left. We're gonna do Green River. It's about 245 customers that have shown. Serious interest enough that we're gonna carry it out. So we've obtained most of the permits we need. There's two sets, two phases that we have a high pressure portion. That we need to build and this is Ron Diggerson, by the way, is a long time Moab resident. I wish I was. I saw late. So just, um, just to kind of give you some details. We purchased a 21 mile 16 inch pipeline from PMC kind of by the Chevron, um, 191. That'll parallel 191 for a few miles north and then we'll cross over and then eventually wind up right outside of Green River. And that's, that's the high pressure portion. I think most of the bidding stuff for that and then we'll, um, in the next month, probably. Few will contractors will begin to run the intermediate high pressure. So the lower pressure lines like you have in town here. In all of Green River else, you know, part of it. And so, um, I think we're just here to kind of make you aware of that, that it's, it's close. We'll be construction, uh, probably this month. And, um, like cooperation on some of the road committees for any needs, things like that. So I think Scott Mezner Smith has been working with, uh. Says in here, Bill Jackson and Bud Arthur, yeah. And that's really the meat of my data or information for now. You guys have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes, sir. So you're mostly going to be asking for, uh, right of ways?
Correct. Use an encroachment, it's probably, and I don't think anything too far outside of that. I think the rural crossing we have commits for. Um, we had to get some, some other permits. There was a piece of land that nobody seemed to own. We had to cross. So outside of that, um, we should be underway, like I said, in probably a month. I will begin some, kind of some sign up. Information in the town, the Green River in the next three weeks probably.
You have customers on both sides of the county line there in Grand and.
My understanding was that only Green River itself was in every county now.
The Elgin part is in Grand.
It's still Grand. So we have a few down there. I can, yeah, get a count.
Doesn't matter. Just curious.
Because of all, it's gonna be underlying shares. So it will be near county, uh, getting the gas there. No other questions?
Nope. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mike Faverro and I manage your reconstruction or new sign ups with Dominion Energy.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, appreciate it. All right. And now we are up to the Thompson Springs Special Service District update. Uh, John?
Hey there. Thanks for having me, everyone. I'm John Corkery. I am a resident up in Thompson Springs. Purchased the Desert Queen Hotel in RV Park back in 2020. And, uh, became the chairman of the Thompson Special Service District in 2021. So the Thompson Special Service District is a, uh, it's a water district that serves the Thompson Springs and Crescent Junction areas. And, uh, we provide water to, uh, several customers there. Our main goals of 2023 are to achieve financial stability. Gather necessary data to apply for a department of drinking water. To the Department of Drinking Water for a system specific sizing reduction. Which would lower the, uh, amount of ER, which would lower the ERU amount that we need. Or when we determine how many. ERUs we could sell. Sorry. Continue, we're, we also want to continue working with the BLM Army Corps of Engineers and TSS, uh, and, and our engineering firms to secure additional water source capacity. And we're working to apply for a C I B grant loan for water system updates and a schoolhouse renovation project. So, so the T S S D is a five-member volunteer board. Uh, we've got, uh, four residents in Thompson and, uh, Grand County Commissioner Jock. Our, is on our board and, um. And then we have, uh, two paid staff members, a secretary and a water operator. Our current customer base, uh, we have 31 residential customers, two gas stations, the seven eleven up in Thompson and the Jackass Joe's. The U dot rest stops along I A D there and the main service building in Thompson. The Thompson Firehouse, Union Pacific Railway. Two, um, RV parks and, uh, the Uptrell Crescent Junction facility. And we do load out sales to ranchers, highway constructions and Cisco and other folks. Anybody that wants water can come and buy water at our loadout. Since I became chairman, well, when I became chairman, there was a lot of problems to T S S D. There, there was a, the, the two kind of, uh, there was two parties in town that were fighting amongst each other. And the T S S D was broiled in a lawsuit right off the bat. And then there was also a, uh, a water deficit that became the case. But our, our engineering firm Sunrise Engineering. Did a, a water master plan update and determined that the T S S D was in a paper water deficit. And so we weren't able to sell water. Um, we're in a lot, a legal battle. And our budget was not balanced and we were basically in the red. So since I became chairman, we've been working to, uh, work out these issues. And, um, we have made some, some decent progress and, um. I'll go through that here in a second. So our current financial outlook is unsustainable. We have a, we are in the red. And why is our budget unsustainable? We are relying on recurrent loadout sales. And last year, we didn't have a lot of loadout sales, probably because it was more rain than usual and a lot of the ponds filled up and whatnot. And so we didn't have as many loadout cells. So that put us in the red. We don't have enough residual monthly income because we don't have enough, uh, water accounts. Uh, we also, the inflation has played a major role in that as well. Cost of goods and services has increased significantly. And the previous board left us in a lawsuit which we had to settle. For right around $19,000 in just the settlement. And then we had to pay another 15 to 20,000 dollars to a lawyer and, and legal fees. So that put us in a hole significant, significantly. And. This is all, and we also were working with the R C A C and we did increase our, our, uh, monthly customer. Rate by 21% last year and this still is not enough. So. So possible solutions to our financial issue is to significantly raise current customer rates again. Uh, increase loadout sales. Which is difficult to just, you know, we kind of, it's sort of hit and miss, you know, but. If construction companies need water, ranchers need water, the railroad needs water, it just depends on what year it is. And I'm, you know, if they're doing projects or not, and it's not really a something to rely upon, I guess. We could increase the number of water accounts, uh, permanent water accounts, which would be the best option. Uh, if we're possible, and we could also try to decrease our budget. And it's difficult, but we're gonna try to do that as well. Uh, we also have sort of a brewing, um, legal situation. Uh, a difficult position we're in because the previous board sold 18 water taps that. The commission then said, well, that, that board got dissolved and the commission said, don't release those taps until the sunrise engineering water study comes out. And when that water study came out, it showed that we were in a paper deficit and so. Um, we did not release those water taps, but we had the money, we still have the money for them. And Grand County put a development moratorium on Thompson Springs. And the Thompson Special Service District moved in accordance and put a development or say a moratorium. On new water cells, any new water accounts. So now we have 18 sales that we have the money for, but we haven't released yet. And then we also have. A few customers that say, well, I already have an existing meter. And my meter has had an account in the past and I bought this property thinking that I had water and. But we're saying that we cannot sell them water because we're in a water moratorium. And if we were to sell them water because they had that meter. Uh, the people that already bought and paid for their meters. Would also be upset with us. And so we're in kind of a odd situation. So it comes that like, if you think about, well, why are we in this water deficit on paper? And the sunrise engineering master plan. They, they did a couple of things that were interesting. Uh, one, they said that, uh. Some of our water rights weren't located to our source. And so we need to move some of our water rights that we have to our existing source. And I've contacted the Division of Water Rights about this and they said that we actually don't need to do that. So that relieves some of our water deficit right there because we don't need to move our water rights to the source. And, uh, another issue was that, um. They use loadout water cells to, which we don't, the state doesn't require that loadout cells be used in a. To determine our source, uh, the amount of water that we can sell, basically. It's not, um. Doesn't require loadouts to be included in, in that determination. The other factor was that they, that sunrise engineering used the number 1700 gallons per day to calculate residential and commercial. ERUs and ERU is an equivalent residential unit. And so they use the number 1700 gallons per day for ERU. Now the state only requires that you use 800. The reason why sunrise use 1700 was because they wanted to include irrigation water for each year you as well. But there, no one in Thompson really uses irrigation water. Some of the residents do water their trees and some of the residents do have gardens, but it's not like typical irrigation water. So now, and, and three years ago, the state came out with a program, it's called, um. It's a, it's a system specific sizing program where you can lower the amount of ERU or gallons per day for ERU. Depending on the average ERU usage of your system. And. The state requirement is 800, but if you can show less than that, you can go all the way down to 400 or even less than 400. So, and when we calculate our numbers out, um, based upon monthly averages from our meter readings. We're seeing that the, the Thompson. Average ERU is between 400 to 450 gallons per day. So that right there. But the, the Division of Drinking Water wants to see, um, daily peak use demand. So this next summer, we're gonna be capturing, uh, meter readings every day. So that we can determine the daily peak demand. Um, and be able to use that data to hopefully lower the amount of water per ERU. And I've, um, in your guys' packets, there's, uh, some, some water studies. Uh, from the Division of Drinking Water and the state that talks about this very thing that, that, um. When they did this system specific sizing study, it shows that. The average household in Utah uses less than 400 gallons per day. In fact, it's about 70 gallons per person per household. Um, so if you have five people in your house, then it's probably around 350 gallons per day is what you're using on average. And. So the number 800 was from the past and. But they, they want you to stick to that number until you can prove that you are showing less. Because some cities have actually, when they did the system specific sizing, have gone from 800 to say 1200. However, the smaller systems like ours, uh, in most cases they go down. And so, and, and the numbers that we show, we feel that we were, we are very likely to have our ERU number reduced. Which would enable us to get out of the water deficit and to be able to sell more ERUs. And, and that would be a good thing. For our budget and to solve some of these legal issues. So, basically. I talked to, I mean, just to kind of continue on this, I did talk to the Division of Drinking Water in the last couple, uh, in the, the last week and. Explain to them the situation that we are in, that our budget is in the red because we don't have um. You know, the loadout cells aren't reliable and that's, we are also. Um, because we just don't have enough customers, basically, and then also the situation that happened with the old board and I said, hey. What if it's if we release these eighteen taps and a few more so that we can get our budget in the black? And we can get out of this legal situation. And we apply for system-specific sizing with the peak demand daily use that we determine over the summer. Um, to see if we are able to sell more taps and. And the Division of Drinking Water said, hey, you know, you guys need to do what you need to do. The, the water study is there for you guys to have some sort of idea of what's going on and to start a discussion. To make sure that we don't get into a, a very bad situation. And, you know, he said, with, with the data that you have, it seems like what you're proposing is, is not a very, I mean, i- is reasonable, basically, and. You know, what, we, we don't wanna see divisions or uh districts such as yourselves go into uh financial difficulty and whatnot, so. So that's what, uh, next month, we're gonna be having a public hearing in Thompson to kind of talk about this and. Uh, amongst the residents and see what everybody has to say. Because the reality is, is our source meter is showing that we're producing three point five, six million gallons every month on average. And the town is using about a million gallons. So. Even if our source were to decline over the next twenty years. Half by fifty percent, we would still be in an okay position. And so. And at the same time, we're also looking to increase our source capacity. So. I feel that it's important to be able to move forward and um get ourselves in a good financial position. And get ourselves out of any legal problems, um, so that we can move forward in, in a, in a positive light. So that's what we're looking to do. Like I said, we're, we're gonna apply for the system-specific sizing this summer and we're gonna potentially release a few more water taps to get us through until then. And if we do this as system-specific sizing and our number was lowered to four hundred gallons per day from eight hundred, that would give the TSSD. The possibility to sell another one hundred ERUs if we were just trying to sell everything. Now, we'd still, I think that we still wanna be conservative. Um, and, and look at our numbers and maybe we only sell fifty. If that's the case, you know, maybe our system-specific sizing says that we have to use the number seven hundred or nine hundred. I don't know, but we. We're gonna find that out and at that point in time, we'll have a better understanding of what we're able to do and what we can do. So that is something that uh, that we're looking to do um. In terms of how we're working to develop new water sources. We are currently looking into developing a secondary water system for livestock, wildlife and irrigation. Uh, there's a lot of water that comes down the Thompson Canyon Wash, uh, whenever there's a rainstorm. And I mean, in one wash, we're seeing as much water as potentially we use in six months per se. And we're seeing that wash, that last year that washed around eight to ten times. And so we're looking at ways to capture that water by building a series of small reservoirs. Um, and we already do, we already have a reservoir that we're not using. It was filled up in the past in Thompson. So by, if we just fill up that reservoir, um, that would be a huge start and we wouldn't even need that much money to. You know, build that infrastructure. But we would wanna build another one up the canyon and that would serve several purposes. Like I said, it would, uh, it would provide water to our senior water rights holders. That are stockholder, that they have stock rights. It would provide water to the BLM for the wildlife. And it would provide irrigation water, freeing up culinary water to be able to use for the town itself. So we could sell more ERUs because we wouldn't uh. We wouldn't have to use culinary water for, you know, watering livestock and whatnot and irrigation. The second thing that it would do, if we built a reservoir up the canyon, it would help mitigate problems when there's flash floods. For instance, last year. We had a water emergency, a contamination emergency because a flash flood washed out one of our pipes and. Our pipes got contaminated and, and we ended up having to spend forty thousand dollars to mitigate the, the problem. Um, and that was because a big flash flood came through and blew out um. One of our pipeline areas, uh, it blew out the road and the, the pipe was under the road and damaged the pipe and water got into there. And so if we, if we had reservoirs up the canyon, it would slow that water down and help to prevent. Uh, flash flood damage in the future. So that is another reason to install a secondary water system. Uh, doing something like this would allow the TSSD to sell another hundred or so ERUs worth of culinary water that we'd be saving. And so we're, we're actually talking to the BLM and the Army Corps of Engineers about this right now. Uh, another source increasing concept that we're working on is to develop the Thompson Springs Old Spring Site. So the, the, the old spring site that the district used to use. Uh, I guess back in the eighties, a cow fell in it and it got contaminated and so they moved this to some springs up the canyon. Well, we could, we are, we've been working with the BLM and Sunrise Engineering to redevelop that old spring site now. Um, and we're in the process of that, but the BLM wants us to contact the Army Corps of Engineers. Um, to determine if it's a wetland and to get a spring alteration permit from them. Um, if, if we were to get this in place, that would allow us to sell another hundred to two hundred ERUs. Uh, so that would be. A pretty big thing as well. The other thing we're looking into is drilling a well. And that would kind of be secondary, secondary to the old spring site redevelopment. So we're, we're talking to the BLM about that as well. We're looking into potentially doing a seismic graphic study. Uh, to see what kind of water is below the surface there and so. Looking at that, depending on the, how much water that brought in would allow us more of ourselves as well. Um, and then the other big thing that we're looking to do is to take over the Uptrell Infrastructure and Water Rights. We just had a talk with Uptrell last week. And. They are looking into the possibility of giving us their infrastructure and also the water right as well. That would be expensive water because we'd have to pipe it all the way from Green River and use diesel uh pumps and it's also six to ten years out. Um, but it is a possibility and if we're to develop some of these. Smaller sources in the near future and we see some growth in Thompson. It may be one day in five to ten years, that could be a way for the town to grow in further. Um, so that's kind of like the, the ways we're looking to, to get new source water. The other thing that, that we're trying to work on is renovating the old schoolhouse because Grand County Fire Department might be taking over. Our uh, our fire, our, our house, which is where we have our meetings and our office. And so we have done some initial architectural work. In the past month, we've gotten several bids from contractors and we'll be looking to apply for CIV funding to. Be able to do the renovations and whatnot. That's an update for you. I'm happy to have, answer any questions if you would like.
Thank, thank you so much for coming, John. And I just wanna point out, I'm on, I'm on the TSSD board of John and I wanna point out that John is just about the hardest working. Chair of any of the boards or commissions that I am on and he is a volunteer. So, so thanks for your service, John. Yeah, um, any questions for John? Uh, yes, Bill?
Yeah, I've got a couple. I know that we've got people putting in for the CBDG grants, I believe. Is there any reason that Thompson isn't? Would seem like a pretty pressing need and you don't have to answer me. I'm just raising questions. Um, my other thought is, are there any vacant homes that are on a water meter? I'm not sure if you can transfer water rights out there, but it sure seems to me that finding. A way to get that restaurant some water for the whole community would be a benefit. I, I'm just throwing it out there as a suggestion. And then, uh, just a question I do have, is Ryan still taking care of your maintenance out there on that water system? I know he was running back and forth from. Moab here, Billy Brian Bell, has he helped you with the maintenance on that system?
Yeah, yeah, Ryan Bell is uh our water operator and. He does a great job and yeah, he has to come out for Moab. We've. We had a guy that was potentially, well, he became the assistant water operator. Because so that in case, you know, there's an emergency, Ryan can come out or something, but then he ended up having Parkinson's and it just didn't. Unfortunately, it didn't work out because he is a great guy and so, um, Ryan is still our guy and he's, he does a great job and we, we like him. He's always on top of things, so. Uh, but I know it's tough for him to come out there and so, you know, if and when one day there is another person. And he, and Ryan doesn't wanna do it anymore, that I, you know, we're not trying to replace him or anything, um, then we could look into that. In, in terms of um. The restaurant you talked about, um, we are one hundred percent wanna get water for that restaurant and. That is part of the sort of legal issue that we're, I was describing, um, and uh. If we were to release twenty-four to thirty more water taps, um. That should, that would be part of it and that the restaurant would be part of it. And that would allow for some growth in Thompson and I think it would be, it would, it would resolve our financial crisis. It would resolve our legal crisis. And it would get us in a, in a good position to move forward, um, with financial strength, so. That's what we're looking to do in the near future and yes, should be definitely a part of it. And the grant thing, um. Any grant opportunities that uh are coming down the pipeline, we'd love to apply for. We applied for a CIV grant. I've got all the information kind of like ready to go, so it's easy to apply for grants. I mean, it's not easy, but it's sort of easy since we have all the information.
Right. Um, I had a question about some of the numbers you threw out. So you said three hundred and three point six five million gallons per month. That's what's being produced by your springs and wells?
Yes, yes, and that'd be, so that source, we, we put a meter on the source right at the springs. Um, that was about ten months ago and that was after the sunrise engineering report came out. Um, and so that really shed some light on, well, how much water are we really producing? And that was a great thing. Um, and, and then our, the meters on our tanks. Which show how much water the town is using are showing about a million gallons uh per month on average. I think the peak month in the last. Three years was one point two five million gallons, so. Far, you know. Less than a third of what our springs is, well, I guess about a third of what our springs is producing is what our peak month in the middle of the summer. Over the past three years showed, so.
And so then, and then the balance is agricultural use or what? Um, the, the difference between one million and three point six five? Or is that, was that just water you're not using?
The, the other two point four million gallons or whatever, um, is just going on to the ground. And.
Okay.
It just, you know, so.
Okay, so you're saying that based on that, you think you could support a lot more hookups and it's really just a paper issue to get permission to do that from the state?
Yeah, yeah, because like I said, the, the number that, like, you know, the numbers that sunrise use were. Very high, and they were being conservative. Um, and they explained that to me, I've talked about it, like they were being conservative and. Using irrigation water and I didn't really get to.
But there are other senior water rights holders out there.
I see.
Yeah, there, there are some, there's some cattlemen and then, and the BLM has senior, is that correct?
Yes, so the way that they boil it down, so you, uh, eighty-five gallons per minute is what sunrise has determined our sources producing. The number that we can use, right? Senior water rights holders get thirty-three gallons per minute, which leaves the town with fifty-two gallons per minute. And. When you boil that down to four hundred gallon per day ERUs. Fifty-two gallons per minute can provide you a hundred and eighty-seven. ER equivalent residential units worth of water and we are only using eighty-seven of those. At the number eight hundred gallons per day, it's more like ninety-four ERUs, right? We're showing the average Thompson ERU as being around four hundred. And that's, if you do that system-specific sizing, the state will allow you to lower it to that number. So. And, and the senior water rights holders, they use, they're, they're, they're watering cattle, right? So they use the water in the spring and the fall because in the summertime. It's way too hot for their cattle and they gotta take them up to the higher altitudes up in the La Salle's or up higher, so they're not using that water, so. It's an interesting scenario. It's almost like a, a buffer, so if you will. So like i- in, in the summer, when they're not using that water. If we needed to, we would be able to have a lot more water to use, but we're not gonna sell that thirty-three gallons a minute. Um, no way, that's not, that wouldn't be right to do because maybe one day they do need that water in the summer, who knows, right? But, but in a sense, it, it is sort of a, a cushion, I guess, uh. So.
Yes.
If, if you were to grant, do, do you know the total number of pending requests for water currently? And the follow-up to that is, could you satisfy, based on your calculation, fulfilling all of those?
Yeah, so we've had, well, I mean, it's, that's hard to say because. In terms of individual applications, we've, we've, the, the old board sold eighteen taps. Okay, and then there's been another six to eight individual applications. However, there has also been an application for sixty-seven taps for a subdivision. So. Um, at the current moment, I don't think that we would be able to, we wouldn't be able to. Conservatively and smartly fulfill the subdivision needs. Um, but if we sold another eighteen, if we released the eighteen and then we'd sold another. Six to ten to twelve, even, you know, thirty more taps we released, that is possible. And with that number, we could say that we could release the former taps and then we could also say, anybody that has a current meter in town. Um, could have, could fulfill their water based of the, you had a meter, you used to have an account. Sure, we'll sell you your water tap and I think that we would be very safe and conservative to, to do that. Before we get our system-specific sizing results from the Division of Drinking Water.
Right.
Bill? Yeah, just a couple more quick ones. It seems pretty clear that you need more storage.
Actually, the storage capacity we have, we have a two hundred and eighty-seven thousand gallon storage capacity, so the water, the tanks. Uh, we have enough to fulfill in the, uh, two hundred ERUs at eight hundred gallons worth of uh. Worth of uh storage.
Okay.
For fire capacity reasons and whatnot and it would be. Easy for us to fill up the reservoir and have a lot more storage capacity for fire purposes. Um, and then all of our culinary water that's in the tanks could be used for culinary and then. If there's a fire, which there was a fire a year ago up in the Brookliffs. And it was unfortunate that we couldn't sell water to the helicopters that were gonna, because we would have made a bunch of money. And so, yeah.
So what about the moratorium? When did that end or when does the Grand County has on you?
I believe that the Grand County Moratorium is.
That, that's ended it. We, we didn't renew that.
That's all I've got. Thank you.
That's just a development moratorium.
Right.
Um, we, so we will be talking in the next month or two, pending the water moratorium. Well, to potentially release the twenty to thirty more water taps, but. Uh, not, and then we would reinstate moratorium until we get our system-specific sizing. Data and or more source capacity. data and or more source capacity.
What's the timeline on that data?
So they wanna see your peak daily demand, which, uh, would, for us would occur most likely sometime in the summer. And so, uh, probably in the fall or next, I would say next winter, because if we, if we give them the whole full spring, full summer and full fall, that should give the daily peak demand because in the winter, they don't use very much water. So. Yeah. And I, I think once we give them the data, it doesn't take them that much time to, to figure it out. So.
Great. All right. Uh, any further questions for John or comments?
Yeah, I've got a question.
Uh, we actually have a citizens to be heard. We don't, we don't, uh, permit, um, folks in the audience to, to speak, but we do have a citizen to be heard at six o'clock if you, uh, wanna stick around. You can also email your question to, uh, the commission at grandcountutah.net as well, Jamie. Thanks.
Thanks a lot, guys.
All right. Thank you very much, John. Appreciate it.
Thanks, John.
Um, okay, we, uh, we don't have any department or agency reports today, so we will move on to the approval of meeting minutes from our January seventeenth, twenty twenty-three commission meeting. Right. That was a quick, uh, quick, quick change of direction. Anyone here to make a motion?
Sure. I'll, I'll move that we approve the minutes for the January seventeenth meeting.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'll second.
All right. I have a motion to approve minutes, uh, from Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Uh, any discussion of those minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously, six to nothing. Um, we are on to, um, ratification of payment of bills and general reports. Um, ratification and payment of bills, uh, county bills, the amount of one million forty-eight thousand seven hundred and five dollars and eighty-nine cents. Uh, payroll in the amount of three hundred forty-eight thousand six hundred fifty-four dollars and fifty cents for a grand total of one million three hundred ninety-seven thousand three hundred sixty dollars and forty-nine cents. And I would entertain a motion for that ratification.
So moved.
Thank you, Trish.
Second.
Uh, motion to, uh, ratify bills by Commissioner Hadeen and second by Commissioner McGann, uh, discussion of bills. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of ratification, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Um, we're on to commission member disclosures. Does any member of the commission have anything they, uh, would care to disclose concerning, uh, today's agenda? Thank you. Um, general commission reports and future considerations. And I would, uh, start with Kevin on reports. Are you ready, Kevin?
Um, sure. I, I think, um, a few of the meetings that I attended are gonna be relevant to agenda items either today or in the future. So, um, I did hear a report from the B L M that they are planning on graveling and eventually paving the, um, Wasn Spider parking lot along Otash Road. Um, paving will happen in July. Um, I performed our last discussion. They mentioned that I, I think Thompson S S D has applied for an additional water right and the B L M said they would protest it. Not because of the object, but they just thought that's the format that they can get certain, um, resources taken into consideration. So, um, and they're starting a new dispersed camping E A along the Cucupelli Trail. So pretty narrow slice, just a little bit.
All right. Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Kevin?
Yeah, I don't have much at the end of the month. I think that, uh, really I was trying to track some of the legislative session action, but, um, nothing related to report on there. So that's all I got.
Thanks. And, uh, Bill?
Uh, I was busy. On the airport board, there wasn't really much there to report. They were just going over the general business. I did meet on the catastrophic wildfire, uh, with the several people from D N R, Adrian Washington, Bruce Jenkins, Rudy Sandoval, and Cora was also at that meeting and it ended up being about as half as long as it needed to be. There was an awful lot of information and we will follow up on that. I think some of the key things that came out of that is they would like the county to be thinking forward a little bit on the shared use of land in the future. They need places that they can store their tenders, be able to operate equipment out of necessarily office space so much. I guess they did mention off, off the space as well, but definitely fire equipment storage. So they're running out of space out by Ken's Lake and have a need for more equipment storage. And we'll end up taking that meeting up even further. I know that the, both the sheriff and T J expressed an interest in being in a future meeting with them to get all it worked out. I did get a tour of the arches S S D, um, water system. I there's a lot going on out there in the last year. It looks like they put about eight hundred thousand in upgrades into that. We're basically just, uh, I'm not sure what we are. They're the owner. We go out there, have meetings with them on occasions and I believe we're a political body, something similar to what y'all voted for the King Creek.
Right.
Is, is my guess. So I then was at the U A C meeting, um, up in Salt Lake. And that one, really what ended up coming out of that was the other than the minutes was a vote on where to hold the next and when to hold the next convention sometime in September is what that looks like. Uh, there's a lot going on at the legislature with U A C and I have sat in on three of those meetings. And you can pull that up and zoom in. I think I've seen Mary Zoom in a time or two, but every commissioner can pull up and vote on any bill and we're voting at those U A C meetings, whether to support neutral or oppose any of the bills going through. And then U A C and their lobbyists then act on the vote of what they hear coming in from people. Uh, I also met at the S C U A L G and I'm about acronymed out, I'll be honest with you. But, um, and that one just went over the business. I know this stuff has come up since our meeting and there's, um, a move to put the revolving loan funds through the Southeastern Utah A L G if the T R T reform. Well, depending on what happens with the T R T reform that, um, Phil Lyman, the bill keeps running. So that would turn into a revolving fund rather than the grant program that was used in the past. So there's still an ongoing moving target with that one. And then I believe that's all I've really got report wise, although I would like for the consideration for the gentleman that spoke earlier that had problems with the website. I think that it would be wise to put that on for considered consideration in the future at our next meeting. So considering the circumstances that they were under and the problems with our website, I'd like to see that come up for review and involve McKenzie. And I don't remember her last name in that. So.
So, um, I wasn't here for that. I was like, I apologize. Um, but from what I'm understanding is somewhere the ordinance is somewhere else on our page. Um, and I've asked McKenzie just to give a little more background to me, but where the intent to apply is submitted, um, it has the ordinance, the correct one. It's completely off of our page. It's linked to E approval. And it does have the deadlines and I believe an acknowledgement in creating an account. That being said, um, I think any commissioner can put anything on an agenda. Just speaking to that, the ordinance being on there and being correct in a place where somebody has to ultimately spend it and read it.
Thanks, Valerie.
I definitely would think that we can put that on the agenda for consideration.
All right. Do you have anything else, Bill?
I, I'll work with McKenzie to make sure that whatever paperwork and filings that they need to get through. So that when we do have that on the next meeting, so everything is up to, um, par for what we're looking at there.
Okay. And I imagine you'd be working with the county admin on that as well.
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Um, all right. All right, Trish.
Okay. So I had, I went to a planning commission meeting and J R spoke there and you know, presented the same information that he presented tonight, so I won't go over that. And we talked about software for overnight rental, um, enforcement. So that was great. And that, and I think that was, I had to leave early. Sorry. Um, I, I'm the Hunter education instructor, but I'm done now. So I had to just a few nights where I had to go. Um, for mosquito abatement, this is really exciting. They hired a new director, executive director. He, his name is Steve Schaefer. He is coming from rifle and it just seems like an awesome individual and he is going to begin March first.
Okay.
So that's really exciting. I know, right? And I went to a Gwissa meeting, groundwater and sewer. And they produced their two thousand and twenty-two drinking water quality report. There were no violations. They test over eighty-five contaminants, um, only fifteen were detectable. And those that were detectable, it is an, an extremely low range. I thought it was kind of interesting. So I just thought I would tell you guys what's detectable. You know, one is just basically soil, so micro bi- biological contaminants, basically soil runoff. Um, radio, radioactive contaminants such as alpha emitters and radium two twenty-eight inorganic contaminants such as arsenic, barium, copper, cyanide, fluoride, lead, nitrogen, selenium, sodium, sulfates and chlorine. But again, these are just like in these microscopic amounts, but kind of interesting what's in your drinking water. Um, and then lake and snow reports, everything is just amazing. So fourteen point six inches snow water equivalent. As of February second, the average is seven point six percent. So current year to date precipitation, eighteen point two inches and the average is ten point eight inches. Percentage of, uh, percent of average is a hundred and sixty-nine percent. Lake level as of the beginning of February was, um, seventeen hundred and forty-two acre feet. In the same time in two thousand and twenty-two, it was nine hundred and seventy-one acre feet. So everything just looks really good. We just need like ten to twenty more years of this. We'll be good.
And I could say the ice skating out on the lake is.
I've heard the ice skating is great. That's good. Saw, I seen that there's full teams out there playing right now.
Pretty awesome.
Yes. So that's it.
All right. Thanks, Trish. Uh, Mary?
Okay, um, we had our, one of our quarterly, uh, meetings with, uh, steering committee for the Umtre project, uh, it was, we're way, we're on our way to removing, uh, over a million tons again this year. So it should, it's moving quickly and it's exciting. Uh, they are to the point that, uh, they're starting to, uh, uh, excavate what's called auto cave claves. They're like fourteen feet by sixteen feet and they're pressurized containers. And they'll have a, uh, another subcontractor that will be doing that. But they don't think the process of getting those auto claves out will slow down the process of getting the tailings moved. It really quite interesting. It's, uh, they're, they were, they're full of, uh, toxic waste material that was, you know, so it's gonna be, have to be handled very, very carefully. And it gets pretty crazy. Sixteen feet by, that's a big, big piece of equipment. Uh, they've gone, uh, they have one of the best safety records in the nation with all of the different, uh, Umtre projects throughout the country. Uh, they were the only D O E, uh, site to remain open during the entire COVID, those first two years. And so it was, you know, they, they were very humble saying that, well, also the way that people work out there made it easy to isolate. Yeah. But it was, you know, so, but I thought that was good. And that's one reason they were able to get so much moved. Uh, we're preparing for our trip to Washington, D C. You saw on the agenda, we sent out twenty requests for, uh, meetings, plus we will be meetings with some people from the internal revenue. I mean, uh, speaking of internal revenue, I'll come up with that in a minute. And, uh, the, uh, Department of Energy. So we'll be very busy. Very busy as well. So we've been working on that. I went to the housing task force meeting. Uh, lots of things moving. It looks, uh, pretty exciting. The Royal Crossing is really moving forward quickly. Uh, some more, uh, sweat equity houses, nine self-help homes will be closing early March. So we'll see nine more homes developing. The Royal Crossings will, uh, will now have their office because their administrator has worked outside their home. Since, since we gave him the grant to get a administrator and now they're going to be housed over at the resource center where, where you've worked. So that's really exciting. They're very excited about that. She should be in her office now. Uh, they're working on, uh, four hundred, they upgrades and energy to help, uh, uh, people in lower incomes, uh, have make their house more energy efficient. Uh, Murphy Flats will have their open house on the eighteenth and the twenty-second. So, uh, I'll remind you. So that's, that's gonna be fun to go see. Uh, and they're working on looking at ways to systematically do, uh, fee waivers and such like that. And they're going to have a workshop on, uh, uh, way, you know, the obstacles to development and also obstacles to buying homes and getting into homes. So it was a pretty, it was a good meeting. Uh, and they're gonna have a, uh, in March, they're gonna have a workshop on how to create, get an A U, A D U established. Why isn't it going to where it's supposed to? I also had a solid waste special service meeting where our, we have our new, uh, administrator, director on board. His name is Mike Kalani. I, I didn't say that correctly, but he will be coming hopefully in March to meet the commission. And then a lot of stuff with, uh, watching, uh, Utah legislators, well, Patricia's heard, it looks like, uh, Lyman's bill to uh, change our T R T tax has been put out. So we just got out. And if it happens, we will lose our economic development department.
Diversification.
Diversification. Well, I was to say, yeah. We've never, yeah, really had an economic development department. So, uh, yes, attended, uh, meetings with that, um, for U A C. Lots of them. Yeah. So, thank you. That's all.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Um, and I've had a relatively slow end of the month, but I did attend, uh, historic preservation uh, commission meeting on the nineteenth. Um, we talked about a page on the Grand County Connects site soliciting public input on a, uh, historic walking tour as well as a historic driving tour for the county. Um, we've gotten, there's an open seat there and we've, uh, actually gotten four applicants now for that open seat, which we'll discuss the next meeting. Um, uh, we also talked about creating a Grand County history page on the county site. And then we also discussed, uh, one of our agenda items today, which is the, um, with, which is the National Register of Historic Places. Uh, rock art, um, uh, uh, funding and grant that will, that will be, uh, coming before us in a few minutes. Uh, on the thirty-first, I actually attended two meetings with, uh, Umtre folk in the last couple of weeks. One was the meeting that John, uh, from T S S D referenced earlier out at the Crescent Junction, uh, Umtre site. And he talked about that, so I don't need to. And I also attended the, uh, one that Mary, uh, discussed earlier. So I didn't have anything to add, uh, regarding that meeting either. Um, on February first, we had our first meeting of the emergency, uh, management committee. And that meeting actually was a pipeline emergency meeting put on by, uh, the emergency management group, but, but basically run by um, a couple of the pipelines, uh, that come through town. And, uh, that was a great meeting, very informative at the Grand Center with a huge participation. And, um, it was enlightening as to, uh, potential emergencies and, and ways to uh, react to those and mitigate that. So thanks, Cora, for that. And that is about all I had going on. Um, so I will move to the uh, elected official reports and we'll start with uh, Clark Boytek.
Um, thanks. Um, this week I'm gonna, I'm driving up to Taylorsville on Thursday to attend an all-day grandma training. Well, kind of looking forward to getting a little bit more of a comprehensive uh, formal training um, in person, so that'll be a great opportunity. Um, as the State Records Office is holding that. Um, and other than that, um, I, I have been um, pretty involved with the Clerks Committee uh, through UAC uh, regarding bills associated with elections. It's, it's pretty exciting. There's a surprising amount of bills associated with elections and since I, now I've gone through, uh, especially since I've gone through an election cycle, a lot of it sort of, you know, it's, I'm, I'm able to pretty much understand um, the ramifications of some of these bills and some highlights are um, uh, legislation, and I don't have any numbers on me right now. So if you, if you have any follow-up or, or curious, please reach out. Um, but there's some legislation um, pertaining to the, how the Cure Letter List um, is, is shared after Election Day and before Canvas.
How the witches share?
The Cure Letter, uh, Cure, the, so any, uh, any ballots that need cured and um, so releasing the list of, of, of voters who need their ballots cure, cured to uh, to political parties and candidates and how that, that information is shared. Um, there's some legislations that would specify how that would be done or change how it is done. Um, there's currently a, 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 a bill introducing a, a provision for statewide races that would include a, a ranked choice voting style provision um, for statewide races where the um, where there wasn't a vote, uh, there wasn't a vote getter that had over fifty percent of the votes. Um, so that would obviously uh, introduce uh, a more complicated ballot. Um, and that, that is something that we're trying to work with legislators on. Um, uh, because clerks generally have been supportive of an approval style. Um, as an alternative to our, our current method and approval, an approval voting method um, would involve uh, allowing voters to, to, to fill in however many bubbles they wanted on a given race. Um, but it doesn't sound like the legisla-, unfortunately, it doesn't sound, let, let, sound like that's on the table for the legislators, so we'll see how this um, potential, we're calling it ranked choice voting light because it's not technically a full, a, a full-blown ranked choice voting. Um, but there's general consensus among the clerks in the state that we're not quite ready for that, um, that style um, of, of voting. Um, some bills related to private and protected, protected voter status. This, um, and then you, one that's gotten more headlines is performance audits uh, every other year for elections, which is generally accepted and welcomed by clerks around the state. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Gabe. And uh, uh, county attorney stocks.
I have continued my dream of going to all the exciting meetings. Um, so I've, I was able to go to the Atlas Committee, the Tailings Pile, um, Economic Development. We had, for this month, we have um, two office staff members are out. My uh, deputy is out on vacation. And Eddie Cervantes is out as well. So I apologize for the little bit of delay. They all come back at the end of February, which is exciting. Um, I met with uh, the judge from the Justice Court and talked with her about a new DB program that they're looking to roll out. There's going to be some training in West Virginia in the third week of March that I'll go to. Um, that should be pretty interesting to help kind of promote uh, addressing domestic violence in a way that can help make it so that less cases occur and the severity decreases. So that's been interesting. We're hiring for a CJC Director position. And then we have extended an offer to fill one of the other vacancies in the office. And so we're getting everybody on and uh, hopefully rolling out with a lot of new fun things. And uh, we're still working on getting the civil tracking that I want to be able to answer commissioner questions. And I know I owe a few of you answers to some questions, but if you guys want, shoot me an email and I'm more than happy to answer questions for you folks. Or, or if you give me a call, that's another way. And I try to be as um, accessible as I can even after hours. So if you want, shoot me a call or text.
Thank you, Steve.
For the commissioners.
Yeah. Thank you. Um, I don't see any other electives here, so we'll move on to the uh, Commission Administrator Report. Mallory?
Yes, I will be quick. Um, just a note to everybody at the next meeting on the twenty-first at two-thirty PM. We're going to have a water workshop with Mark Stillson. Um, I know I've written it down somewhere what the content will least focus on or touch on, so I can send that along um, in an email. You all will hear from me on a few agenda items about public tender contracts, which has been a never-ending process. I know a lot of you have heard that for many, many months for me. Um, and let's see, I just attended a meeting at the M I C with August just regarding their operating agreement and that will come before all of you at the next meeting. And another thing that I will want to bring back to you, but I'm planting the seed is uh, the city has expressed interest in working with the local group and doing a mural on the restrooms near Lions Park. So I, I'm gonna chat with Sean and see what he thinks, but I'd like to bring that to you all, also to consider. And I think that's all I have.
Thanks, Mallory. Quinn, do you have anything to add?
No, lots of meaning.
Right. And I see uh, Chris, our Strategic Development and Budget Director on Zoom. Did you have anything that you wanted to add, Chris?
Uh, no.
All right. Thank you, guys. Then uh, we will move on to our general business and action items. And uh, first up is, yeah, first up is our independent contractor agreement with Integrated Solutions Consultant for the Grand County Hazard Mitigation Plan and I'd invite uh, Cora Phillips up.
Hello, thank you.
Hi, Cora.
Uh, so we are looking to update our hazard mitigation plan. It is set to expire in October. We need a contractor to help us through that process. Uh, we release the bid for proposal to three contractors per policy. Uh, and two of those responded. Uh, the one that we selected was Integrated Solutions based on uh, feedback from other emergency managers, also our community support liaisons on this. Does anyone have any questions about that so far?
All right. I assume everyone got a chance to read through the uh, agenda items. Does anyone have a question for Cora?
Uh, they have also worked in Sandlot County and they recently, uh, they were very pleased, Tammy Gallegos is the emergency manager there. Uh, they also worked in Salt Lake County and Whitney Carrad who's our community support liaison, saw their plan and was very pleased.
Great. Thank you, Cora.
And it looks like this would just cost us four thousand dollars?
Sorry, forty thousand.
No, but the uh, some of that is grant-funded and some is from the city.
Um, so uh, some is grant-funded, some is us, and then uh, the amount that went over forty thousand that was budgeted prior to my employment here. This contract goes over that amount by seven thousand.
Right, seventy-six hundred. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes. So uh, the plan is to have a meet, I'll attend the City Council meeting on February fourteenth of Valentine's Day. And that will be a food stop additional.
Right. And I, I also talk to Carly and her, you know, she did say they don't need to approve something. We don't need to worry about the funding not coming through from the city there. Good.
All right. Thank you.
The check's in the mail. Right.
All right. Well, Mallory's covered it. I would uh, move to approve the Independent Contractor Agreement with Integrated Solution Consultants for the Grand County Hazard Mitigation Plan.
Thanks, Evan.
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Clapper and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any further discuss, uh, discussion or questions for uh, Cora? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes five to nothing with uh, Commissioner McGann as well as Commissioner McCurdy, uh, absent. Uh, second was Commissioner Hadeen. Yeah, you got it. All right. Thank you, Cora. Yeah. Um, going on to agenda item number two, approving resolution amending the Grand County Handbook, Sections eight and ten. Renee Baker, Personnel Services.
I'm gonna invite um, Chief Deputy uh, McCallum up as well for our Sheriff's Office section. So within this resolution, I have two policy hit, or policy updates to our handbook. Uh, the first is a, a policy update to our holiday, um, policy currently, as my agenda summary says, but um, doesn't take into account the kind of unique schedules that kind of happen in our, in our Sheriff's Office and for our law enforcement employees. So they would get paid that holiday pay for holiday work pay on the observed holiday. So if that falls on a different day than the actual holiday, like it did for Christmas this year, um, they would not be getting that holiday paid for Christmas, but on the observed holiday, which goes Monday, the sixth. Um, so a change in the policy would just update that for the Sheriff's Office, law enforcement officers to observe the holiday always on the actual holiday day. And then the second, uh, Mike, I'm sorry, did you want to add anything to that?
You guys have any questions about what I think it is on that?
No, I think it makes pretty good sense, Mike. Thanks. Yes.
And then the second update within the, the resolution there is just uh, should an employee, for all employees, need to take a personal vehicle for Grand County travel due to the lack of fleet vehicles or rental vehicles, um, that they would receive a full round trip reimbursement instead of the one-way reimbursement that is currently.
It's about time.
It's about time, Mary.
I mean, isn't that awful?
We also have, you know, fancy new fleet vehicles coming out, so you can take them out of town too. Same thing.
Awesome. Thanks, Renee.
Get there and then you're just supposed to stay there.
I had no idea that, but they don't get, they, they didn't reimburse you. So you tried, you tried to stop like, and you get paid for going there.
One way.
One way. And you couldn't drive a county car fifty miles out of town. That was pretty crazy.
All right. All right. Thanks. Renee and Mike, any, uh, any questions for, for them? Yep. I think both those policies make, make perfect sense, so uh, I would entertain a motion.
Um, sure. I, I move to approve the resolution amending Sections eight and ten of the Grand County Employee Handbook.
Thank you, Kevin.
I'll say.
All right. Thanks, Bill. Um, motion on the table by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Uh, any further discussion?
Um, this is sort of um, made meta discussion. I've, I've noticed in the agenda that all the sample motions are under fiscal impact. Did your staff notice that glitch?
That would have been my mistake. I probably, oh, wait, this one I didn't do. Sorry, Renee. Maybe we changed the format um, recently, just at the budget question. Uh, so I'm guessing that it, it's, it's a little weirder to put it in and where you would think.
Okay, just wanted to make sure you guys are working on.
Okay.
I'll check it. Make sure I put it under.
All right. I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank both of you. Uh, all right. Moving, resolution amending the Grand County Public Library Board of Directors bylaws. Uh, Commissioner Hadeen?
Do you want me to present it, Carrie? Do you want to come up? Thank you. She came in just in time.
Perfect. All right. Got you off the hook.
Perfect.
I was watching uh, my computer. Um, Carrie Valdez, I'm the library director. Um, so the one, the first one in front of you is uh, pretty much a housekeeping issue. Um, our bylaws haven't been changed in quite a while for the library board, so it references the Grand County Council. We updated that language and then we removed a section that discussed some standing committees. Um, and remove those committees and just allowed for the board to set up uh, committees on an asked needed basis.
Great. Thank you. Uh, any questions for Carrie?
Um, this is, I don't know if this is more for Carrie, for Trish or um, but I've realized that I served on the library board in the past and since serving on other boards, a common duty of board members is to perform some kind of annual review on the um, Executive Director or whoever the board is overseeing. And I remember that in the library, we didn't have that opportunity to, to uh, give Carrie feedback on what a good job she was doing.
I was just gonna say, but it was all good.
Exactly. But um,
but I do think there's a section in there that states that the um, I don't know if it says council administration or HR can ask the board for input. So I, I think it is written into the bylaws that it can happen.
Okay.
Might be a useful thing.
Yeah.
Even if it's voluntary.
Interesting. Yeah. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, Kevin. Um, I, I move to approve the resolution amending the Grand County Public Library Board of Directors bylaws.
Thank you.
Second.
All right. I have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner McGann. Uh, any further discussion or questions for Carrie? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that uh, motion passes unanimously. We also have a, let's see, action item number four, voluntary appointment to the Grand County Public Library Board of Directors. And uh, uh, Trish, do you want to handle this or, or Carrie?
Carrie's got it.
All right.
So at our last regularly scheduled meeting, the Board of Directors uh, interviewed and then uh, made a recommendation to the Commission regarding one vacant position on the library board with the two applications that were received. Um, the recommendation via the library board was unanimous. And you have the applications there in front of you.
Um, I, I love this one application. She became a resident in nineteen fifty-six and her qualifications, I love to read. It's like, that is a great qualification.
Absolutely. All right. Do you want to make a motion, Trish?
Yeah, I move to approve the appointment of Michelle Widera. How is that? To serve on the Grand County Public Library Board of Directors with term expiring twelve thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-six. And then did we have, sorry? And then that's all it stated. So is Patricia the exact same? Um, sorry, why? Oh, there was just one. I'm sorry. Sorry.
Yeah, there's one, there's one vacant position. There will be more at the end of this term, at the end of this year, but for now.
Thank you. Yep.
Great. Thanks, Trish. Second?
Awesome.
Okay. All right. As a motion to approve um, Michelle Widera by Commissioner Hadeen and a second by Commissioner Winfield, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the appointment, raise your hand. And, and that passes unanimously. All right, moving through these. Thank you. Thanks, Carrie. Uh, we are on to uh, action item number five, voluntary appointment to the Grand County Economic Development Advisory Board. Um, Commissioner McGann and uh, August Granith are head of our Economic Development Department.
Uh, hello, everybody. Um, so the Grand County Economic Development Advisory Board met um, in open meetings on the fourteenth of December and last year and January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, reviewed all submitted applications, interviewed all um, qualified applicants um, for the following uh, positions. Uh, specifically private sector representative currently filled by Bradley Bertoc. The board voted during the January twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting to forward the recommendation of Chris Wilson to the County Commission for Appointment as a private sector representative, with the term expiring December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
All right. Thank you, August.
I, I discussed with uh, both Kevin, because he was at the meeting and with August and I have a, uh, about perhaps the commission choosing one of the other board members. Uh, but uh, I was asked politely to allow the board to, to follow through and do that at their meeting in uh, February, so that's what I recommend doing. So I'll make a motion. I move to recommend uh, Chris Wilson to the Grand County Commission for the Appointment the Private Sector Representative for the Economic Diversity Advisory Board, term expiring uh, December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you, Mary.
I'll second that.
All right. Uh, I have a motion to approve Chris Wilson to the Advisory Board by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any uh, further discussion or questions for August or Mary?
I'll ask a question.
Sure, Bill.
I'm curious as to why Mr. Bertoc didn't retain that position. I believe he applied for that position as well again, did he not?
Yeah, so there's still a vacant position that he's eligible for. So he, there were several motions that were made that didn't carry. Um, so there was interest in several of the other candidates, including Brad. Um, but the board didn't come to consensus. So there's still an additional vacancy that we'll be considering. So he's still in the running.
Kevin?
Um, yeah, no, I support appointing Chris, but I think, you know, that's a good question, Bill. And, you know, there were two openings on the board. I was at the meeting. It seemed like they just had too many qualified candidates and, you know, quite a few people were able to garner, you know, not quite a majority. Um, but I guess what I was curious about is more procedural issue that will apply, you know, in the future when situations come up with this. You know, my reading of the ordinance about the appointments is we don't have to wait for them to make a recommendation. Um, so, but I just, maybe we need to clarify the, you know, our general ordinance about, and maybe Stephen, if you have thoughts on that.
Yes, please, Stephen.
So in their bylaws specifically does put the owners on the board to send recommendations forward. In their bylaws, it says that they will recommend individuals and send to the board, alter, or to the commission. Ultimately, the commission's going to make the decision on who goes up.
And just to clarify, these are the specific EDAB bylaws, not the general. Okay, thanks.
Um, and the other, the other thing that we would want to make sure and clean up in the future is make sure that those, that when we have the end of the year come, individuals that want to carry over, they would need to inform the commission or the chair that they want to carry their appointment over. Otherwise, their terms end at the end of the year. And so also, when individuals are, that their times lapse, lapse, they really shouldn't be voting on things and they shouldn't continue to attend meetings in their position as a board member.
But I thought their bylaws said specifically that the board members serve until replaced?
Theirs actually said that they would remain on if they submitted a written desire. They had to submit, Mallory and I looked through it, they had to submit just a simple written intent that they wanted to continue on their term, but neither of them did that. And, and interestingly enough.
Brad?
Brad. Brad was actually at the meeting and he kind of, he had the opportunity to vote for himself and to continue on, and he kind of had a lukewarm response to it, which was interesting because he, when his, when he was selected, it was a three, two, zero to two, and he was one of the extensions. So he could have voted for himself and been pushed up as a recommendation. But the cleanest way to go about it would be for them to recommend, they had, out of the seven, because I was at the meeting as well, out of the seven, they had five members appear and two of the members' terms may have, um, probably could have been cleaner on the way in which they expressed their intent to be carried over. So that was kind of another issue. So in the future, I think it's, I don't know if it's on for this agenda or for the next agenda. We've drafted some best practices for boards to make sure in the future that when we get to these periods where, where at the end of the year, everybody should know whether they're going to be carried over or not and clean up the bylaws. And so I want to work with Mallory to be able to go through all the bylaws and clean everything up, because there are some issues like this, and it's different, because some boards are, you stay on until you're replaced. And others are, you automatically expire at the end, and then sometimes statutes play. But in this one, it did say that they expire unless they sent written notice that they want to continue.
Okay, so some of the people voting in that meeting shouldn't have been voting then?
That's, yes, so technically, two of the, okay, so two of the members.
They didn't even have a quorum in that case.
That is, that is correct. So two of the members shouldn't technically have even been voting. They were the two, two out of the five that were there, so three appeared. Technically, they wouldn't have quorum. Technically, they should go through and do the whole process over because they couldn't have created enough majority for a quorum and they couldn't have contained enough votes for the requirement under the bylaws that said you had to have a majority member of the voting numbers, not of the quorum. And so they needed four all day. And in one of the motions that was made, it was made by Mr. Walker, Rob Walker. He was also technically out of time on his appointment. The other gentleman, he didn't actually vote. He abstained. So his, his voting record was clean, but we only had three. So if we want to do it perfectly, we actually shouldn't appoint anybody because we didn't have quorum and we should have them redo the whole thing and send it back because of.
Well, I think, yeah, thanks. All of that's really helpful and clear. Thanks. Um, I think my biggest concern is this idea that we shouldn't appoint until we hear from the board, because a board could just, you know, either maybe they don't, can't muster a quorum, or maybe they just want to be stubborn and, you know, stay where they are, you know, in conjunction with this, you know, term going. So I, I think as we clean things up, I would think for all boards, you know, that they're encouraged to make a recommendation. But if they don't, the commission can just appoint anyway. I would hope that that's.
And that caveat could be added, but the language that they have is that they will, will make recommendations and send them forward to the board. And I get, I get the point, essentially. And the counter would be that these individuals are doing this advisory, and you were there, you were at the meeting. It was, I would say, people are not, people on these boards are volunteers. They're not used to making very open discussions about who's better than who and who should be on the board versus who, and there was kind of a struggle to go through that. But I think if the intent set up in the bylaws for them to make a recommendation, then that's why they're there. They're an advisory board to make that most difficult conversation.
And they spent ninety minutes trying to make a recommendation and didn't manage to do it. So I don't, I don't think we should wait forever. I think, you know, they had their opportunity and then.
Yeah, I was.
Bill, go ahead.
So then my question would be is why are we moving forward at all? It really sounds like that nobody should be appointed at this point and allow the meeting to go back and get a correct quorum.
That, that would be, I would support that recommendation. There were two individuals that didn't appear, one, well, for their own reasons.
Yeah. Mary?
I just, I, I just wanted to, I got a little confused. I want to make sure I understood it correctly. You said at the end of their term, their term is up, so that it goes back, it goes into an application process. But they can write asking to remain on the board until they are reappointed or replaced. Is that what you're saying?
For that specific board, their bylaws did say that. That specific board stated their term will expire unless written, written notice is given that they desire to remain on until they're replaced. And that caveat, that window would have been anytime up before. So all of them could sign up and literally just write in day one, hey, I want, after my term expires, I want to hold over.
Until my.
So for Brad Bertoc, wouldn't the fact that he was applying to be on the board again count as that kind of notification?
That, that could be the argument, but he, all he had to do is send a, sure. I mean, could you, could you craft it and rotate it? Sure. But then even then, he chose not to vote on, his vote didn't count anyway. So he, he still made it the board as well.
But Mr. Walker counted.
Correct, but they still wouldn't have, they would have had four, so.
But that would solve the quorum issue.
But it wouldn't solve the vote issue, because on the vote.
But the four did, the four did approve Mr. Wilson.
Rob Walker was the voting number in that one.
Okay.
So he was out of time.
I thought you just said he was carried over because he hadn't been re, or hadn't been replaced yet.
He didn't, he, Rob Walker didn't reply. He didn't write in that he wanted to remain on either. So that was the problem with that vote. It was Rob Walker plus three other individuals with Brad, who you could make the argument that his term should carry over. He abstained.
So, so one thing that came through to me very clear from that meeting is, one, they're having trouble mustering a quorum because of these expired terms and also because there's a member who's not attending. And also that this Chris Wilson, who's on the present motion, had overwhelming support. They, they went through that really quickly.
Sure.
Everybody liked Chris and then they couldn't decide on the second appointment. So I think we should go ahead and appoint Chris, since that's what the board wants, and we've got quorum issues.
It's Mike.
Okay.
Well, it doesn't seem clean at all. I mean, I know that's what they want, but it sounds to me like we need to make a motion and push this to the next meeting when they can have a quorum, if we want to follow the bylaws.
Well, if, if they, I have another question for Stephen. So it sounds like it's, you know, nothing sounds really, it sounds muddy right now. But so if we wait and let them do the process again, then, and it's still muddy, then we just get to a point.
I think that, I think that would be the cleanest.
Even though they sent a recommendation and it wasn't really a quorum, but we know from, I watched part of the meeting, because I wasn't there, I got the, Ben sent me the audio, the, you know, the copy of it, that it was obvious that Chris was one, you know, that that's going to probably, so I could see that we're not, maybe we're not voting on Chris because of the quorum, but because it is apparent that that is what.
And ultimately, my, my two senses, do I, do I think this is a, it's an advisory volunteer board? You know, putting it in perspective. It's important to do things the clean way as best we can. I know one person probably would have been there but for tremendous life circumstances. And the other one, I don't know why they didn't appear. I mean, if the intent's to allow them an opportunity to do the recommendation and two people were missing, you know, do you want to wait for that or not? It's the, it's the commission's decision ultimately. And so I would defer to what the commission wants to do, but in my, in, from looking at it, it could have just been done just a tad bit different and just in a way that would have been cleaner. So that's, that's my two cents. At the end of the day, the commission makes the decision it makes.
So I'm looking at Resolution thirty-one eighty-four, which is the, you know, general resolution about board appointments. And it says, you know, all board appointments shall be selected in the following manner, and then it lays out some rules. Doesn't that supersede their bylaws?
Their bylaws? We had, they had an adjusted one. Let me pull it up.
I would, as long as we're here, I would ask August if he has any opinion, or if you don't, I totally respect that, too, August.
Uh, no, I'm happy to buy by.
Okay. Right. I guess, I mean, because this EDAB only meets once every two months, right?
No.
Oh, monthly. Okay, right.
So while Stephen's looking at that, I'll add, Alicia has been doing some edits on the red line four. There's the resolution you just mentioned, as well as an ordinance giving the guidance for bylaws. And, and I, I think it is a good way. This conversation, silver lining, maybe you want to be a part of, like, a meeting where we could go through it or another commissioner and just try to clean those up and then have department heads or other staff liaisons work with their boards to try and integrate things. But I'm thinking EDEB's resolution has the same odd language that the board resolution has of this shall supersede this. And, but I guess Stephen's looking at that, but it definitely it's clear as mud.
Right. Yeah, but I would be interested in discussing those revisions. Yeah.
I don't have it yet. I'm sorry.
And as long as we're, as long as we're still discussing this, I think my, my personal inclination would be to go with the original motion that, that Mary made. I don't know how the rest of you feel, and Bill, if you still feel strongly against, then you may make a amended motion. And that would need a second and then a vote to, to carry forward.
The nice thing, the reason I see, and I, I really like following policy, but one reason I see the importance of appointing Chris tonight is that they're having a hard time having a quorum. And if we don't appoint her, well, we might be back in the same position next month. And as it is, an advisory board is not a board that gives to make decisions on how money's spent, how they advise.
I should clarify, my understanding is that quorum for the meeting is based off the entire membership, not the voting membership, but the voting rules are based off the majority of voting members. Unless I'm wrong.
It's different for.
For this board.
For staff.
Yeah.
Okay. But you're, you're pointing out that for this board, we did, if we count the non-voting members, there was a quorum. So the quorum's not an issue.
That's mine.
But they didn't have enough voting members to really have.
And even that parts ambiguous.
I guess what I'm just trying to point out is, my understanding is the meeting was at least held in accordance with.
Oh, yeah, the meeting was. But it's interesting. That's about the only board I know that members that are appointed are part of the quorum, because I know that's not how the UMPR one does. Like, there's all sorts of people that come that don't vote. But you have to have a quorum of the voters.
And he's correct. Their, their quorum is, is based on their, they have, they have a total of twelve members on this board. And five of them are non-voting members. And it does just say of, of the members present, but they can't, they don't have enough to make the four votes necessary to carry of the majority of the voting numbers. So they only have three. That makes sense.
So the only motion that carried was the motion to recommend Chris Wilson.
Technically, not, because Rob Walker decided not to vote. He only had, it was three to zero, because the other, the other gentleman didn't, he decided to abstain on all the votes.
That, that's what I was trying to.
Yeah. And Rob, and Rob did not reply.
No.
I think to Mary's point, it's effective. It would be good to get another member in there.
So we can have that now.
I'm still looking for the, the point where I wasn't.
Okay, so, so back to us. Yeah, we have a, we have a motion on the table made by Commissioner McGann and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Did you want to make an amended motion, Bill? Okay.
Oh, Chris? Where's Chris?
Oh, on the internet.
Oh, Chris. Okay, yeah. Sorry, Chris. Go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say that the, the bylaws indicate that voting happens by simple majority. The term simple majority is pretty much universally used to describe a situation where of the votes that are cast, all you need is a majority to prevail. And, and so that, you know, my interpretation of that is the voting members are the ones that are voting. And you have, you obviously have to be there to vote. And so when you put those two things together, simple majority of those who are voting, then, you know, that, the common interpretation of that is it doesn't require a quorum vote. It's, it's just a simple majority of the votes cast.
In that case, then the recommendation for Mr. Wilson would, would stand.
It, in their bylaws, it separates out two sets of different members. So in the bylaws, if you look on section, section two, membership, it draws out, the board shall consist of six non-voting members and no more than seven voting members. Then in the same area, they say a simple majority of the voting members. So it could be cleaner where you say voting members at the specific meeting or we're talking about the voting numbers overall. So.
Well, yeah, and that, that's not clear, but what is clear is the term simple majority. You know, if you look up what simple majority means, you know, in almost all voting contexts, it's referencing a majority of votes cast.
Okay, I think.
And so I don't think they would use, they wouldn't, we wouldn't use the term simple majority to, to describe, you know.
I think this conversation's been useful in that it obviously points to the need to clear some things up, and I think Mallory's point of best practices, revisiting that coming up is, is important. And I think it's time to call for a vote on the original motion, which moves to approve Chris Wilson for one of the spots and to leave the other spot open. So, uh, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. All those opposed? And all those not voting or abstaining, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you. Uh, the motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Winfield in abstinence. Thank you, guys. Uh, we'll move on to item number six, Contract with Wander App Incorporated for Development of an Interactive Destination Map. And August, you're back in the hot seat.
All right. Well, this should be a little bit more simple, I hope. Um, if this feels like deja vu, it is. This, this was passed this summer. Um, contract to work with the vendor Wander App Incorporated to develop a mapping software that we can control to show people where they should be, where they shouldn't be, and all, provide all the right information and keep it all in-house. That was approved. On, and basically, the vendor had a staff who, where they did not countersign. And their, their staff who was representative for that had left the company and hadn't shared that with the rest of the organization. They basically wanted to make it right with us by offering us, you know, the time that they. the time that they were working with us, and when we weren't under contract, basically comps time, and to just start that contract over to new effective date of today, um, which effectively gives us like a six-month discount, um, on their services. Nothing else changes the contract except for a, uh, effective date of today, term, what term is a year. It's got automatic renewal language, it's got appropriation and termination language, they're not providing substantive services for us. Uh, the money's in the budget, the budget was approved. That's, that's pretty it, that's permission, that's the question.
So, so when that person left the company and then worked on, the app just stopped?
Continued, no, there's a, there's a, there's a contract, kind of an account person, and then the actual product person working with our team, with two different people.
Okay, which one left the company?
The person who was in the contract, the contracting person.
Okay.
Or sales revenue, account manager person.
Okay, great. So basically, they've- Okay, been fulfilling their contract, but there never was a contract, so, so we're getting half a year.
Basically, we're getting free work.
Great.
Yeah.
Hard to, uh, argue with that, right? Uh, Kevin?
So I, I moved to approve the contract with Wander App Incorporated for the development of a quote, interactive destination map.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, motion on the table by Commissioner Walker, and a second by Commissioner Hadeen, any further discussion or questions for August? Bill?
Yeah, I'm curious, with as many apps as there are out there, more than we can count, why we need to be paying for one to begin with, and as you said something, just a minute ago, control, what are, what are we controlling?
So this is a perfect example, and Anna's probably the better person to talk to this, but if you look at good examples, like Trail Course and All Trails, they're all user-generated. So they're basically relying on, on people who have, oh, like vetting to provide information, to create routes, to say this is how it was this day. Um, and so there's, there's things like, for example, Milk, Milk Creek, the way that it's on, on trail maps, say like, hey, go for a great swim and go for a cliff jump, um, right? We, we see that impact on our search and rescue, and there's no way for us to force those third-party applications to change how they're describing their product, or they're like, hey, it's great to go in the middle of July. You should have no problem, bring like an ounce of water. Um, and so it's, it's fundamentally, what they're offering is for destination management organizations, an ability to present the area that you're in with the right information, with accurate trails, GPX, all, all the rest. And we're, we're also working in tandem with those organizations like All Trails to, as they're beginning to create backend access for kind of the local, um, land management agency, in our case, the Trail Department, and to make those changes. So one, one really interesting project, for example, that we're working on is there's not a really good way to, to look at the BLM dispersed camping overlay. They have the Avenza map, and they have the, the paper map that you get, the MIC, for example. But there are these shape files that say, well, you can disperse camp here, and you can designate disperse camp here, you can't camp here, this is wilderness. But if you're just driving around on a road, it's pretty impossible to figure out exactly where you can camp. And so one of the, one of the features we're trying to create is a really interactive overlay that shows you basically, can I camp here? And it'll tell you the status of where you are. And if you can disperse camp or not. It's really, um, solving a problem that there's not a solution for.
And this will be managed then through your?
Yeah, so they basically build it to spec, um, and, and Melissa in our office, and Robert, and, uh, Anna from the Trail Department, kind of the few people.
Yeah, I, I was in some of those meetings, and it, it was, um, yeah, clear that it would be very advantageous for the county to have a platform where they controlled a hundred percent of the content, because that's just not, um, yeah, it's not possible with any of the, the stuff that's out currently.
Yeah, I think the other plus is that when we list trails on our website, undiscovered app, for example, mountain biking, we have 2D flat maps that, that are, you know, we distribute, um, at, at, uh, for, for trail mix. But there's no way to say like, okay, well, I want to look at all the blue squares, regardless of what area they are, with this platform, you can kind of select, do trip planning, check it out, zoom in and out, and it, it also works offline in your phone. So you can take it with you, um, and use it as navigation. It's free to user.
Yeah, so I just want to put, point out that, um, we did, you know, when, when this was on the agenda last summer, you know, there was extensive discussion about all these issues, and why in the world would we want to do this, and how does it compare to existing apps? So, um, you know, that, we, we did have the discussion, and I, I don't think we would approve this if it were brand new without more discussion, so. Just, you know, for, for members of the audience who, um, missed the meeting six months ago.
Is, is this a one-time fee, the fourteen thousand?
Fourteen thousand's been that.
It's annual?
Yeah. But that's a discounted rate, it's typically ten thousand dollars for that a year.
All right, I, um, have a motion, uh, by Kevin, and a second by Trish, any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor of approving the contract with Wander App, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Thanks, August.
Thank you.
All right, we're on to agenda item seven, Utah Certified Local Government, the CLG Program Grant Application for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four for National Register of Historic Places. Rockart, uh, welcome, uh, Jody Patterson from the, uh, Historical Preservation Commission.
Hey, everybody. We were approached by the Utah Rockart Research Association to apply for a certified local government grant to help the BLM and Yurara complete, uh, a multiple, a national multiple property listing, which will be broken up into three different historical districts. Uh, the ship was working on two of them, and Yurara has kind of taken on one other district that they want to do, and that's the Portal King Creek area. Um, they approached us, we, uh, reactivated the office and are now eligible to apply for that grant, and working with Yurara. They have put in six thousand dollars. The grant will cover six thousand dollars, and there's another fifteen percent in that grant uh, to re, uh, so the county can recoup administrating the cost of those grants. And we would like, uh, to get your guys' approval to proceed with that, but if you have questions on the denomination process, what they're actually trying to do to get nominated, I'm happy to answer any questions you guys got. Some of the information was in the packet you got, but happy to answer anything else.
Great, thanks, Jody. Yes, Kevin. Um, so if, so if I'm reading this correctly, this isn't going to cost the county anything, it's all coming through various grants?
You guys are getting eighteen hundred bucks.
Right. Yeah. And, and then I guess I am curious, is more, is, is it just, so, so this is a grant to pay someone to apply for another grant, is, um?
No, it's, the, the money would be used to hire a cultural resource professional um, to complete the National Historic District nomination board. It's really relatively complex, required a lot of compilation of data, GIS, other information to go into it, that gets then, goes through the BLM and the Utah State Historic Preservation Office. And once they have, are good with form, they would send that on to the keeper of the register, which is a National Park Service person to get listed on the National Register.
And, and what are the advantages to being listed?
Um, it's mostly an honorary type designation, it really doesn't do anything in terms of any future developments that could take place on those BLM lands that are being put into the district. When the BLM's going through and doing their, their checklist, when a project comes through, it might raise one more eyebrow. Um, but it doesn't really do anything in other than be honorific. Um, it does allow for other grant monies to be applied for, so if there's conservation needs, so like, we're all aware that vandalism has increased substantially in the portal and King Creek areas, uh, like Birthing Rock got tagged pretty hard in a year and a half, two years ago. Um, there might be some monies that the BLM or State, or State Historic Preservation, or even the Grand County Historic Preservation Commission could apply for, to maybe do some conservation work on some of those types of things. Um, and really what it does is it allows everybody who's going out there to know that, hey, this is an important piece of our, our local history, worth protect, worth protecting. You know, just so people recognize that, hey, people care about this, we're not going to go out and start tagging.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Yeah, thank you, Jody. Any other questions?
I really see the, the rock art in that area as, as a treasure, and, and I think bringing awareness is, uh, a great thing. So with that, I would move to approve the submission of grant application to nominate rock imagery sites located on public lands in the Portal King Creek area to the National Register of Historic Places.
Thanks, Evan. Okay, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Clapper, and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussions? Seeing none, I will call for a vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Jody.
Thank you, Jody.
And, uh, it is now just about six o'clock, it's actually at six o'clock. Um, I would call for our second citizens to be heard session. Is there anyone here who would like to come forward, Sina?
Rock art, but, um, so obviously Thompson Springs got some pretty unique rock art there as well. But, um, doing a lot of work outside of the potential of the property that I own, I would always see people at night walking by, what's there to do, what's there to do? And of course, as we know, Moab is always known for arches. And Thompson, as we know, has always been known as junk. And so being a little insulted and a protective of the Thompson area, even though I live in Moab, but I have property in Thompson. I thought, you know, there's actually a lot of really cool things up here for people to see. So I put together two, like rack cards, and, uh, each one of them has six pictures, and then a little map at the bottom with a key of an area where these interesting things are. One of them are interesting signs, so Desert Moon has got a nineteen fifty-ish sign, the Thompson, um, Cafe has got a nineteen fifty-ish cafe sign. So there's about six, six different signs like that, so I made a, a rack card that you can slip over, and it shows you the map, so there's two of them, one is, it's interesting things, there's some old relic cards that are sort of historically sort of put in different places. Um, and so I thought, you know, to have a rack card to hand out, and it sounds like maybe you're going to be putting together a website of interesting things to do, I could, you know, send it off to you in the morning, and you can take a look at six pictures, and then the other side is six more pictures, and there's a little map in the bottom. I didn't want to totally pinpoint exactly where they are, they're, I mean, it's a small map. But people get more excited about when they self-discover, when they discover, so they, if they look at the little map, they go, oh, there's something over here, it looks like a, a really cool sign. You know, they'll look around, oh, there it is, I found it. So I would like to be a part of submitting that to if you're going to have a website, or if you're going to have something, um, you know, is, is promoting the county.
So you got a driving tour, yeah.
Yeah, well, it's, a lot of it is walking, it's, um, it's titled Walk Around Town in Thompson Springs, it's by label, that's the name of it.
Yeah.
So you can walk around Thompson and see uh, old signs, and then you can walk around Thompson, Thompson, and see some old artifacts, or some interesting things. Has a little handout, or, or I'll email that to you tomorrow. See, that I-
Thanks, Sina.
I was happy to hear.
All right.
About promoting the county.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Any other citizens to be heard? Jamie, did you want to come forward? Yeah, go ahead.
I'm Jamie Rourke, I own a little bit of ground up there in Thompson Springs. We're on, I think about month twenty-eight or twenty-nine, trying to sort out the, uh, the leftovers of the last, uh, Thompson Special Service District Board up there. Uh, I, I wanted to ask JR there before he left. I, I really don't think that there's a lot of people that have put enough attention to solving problems up there. They have far more water running down, down the creek there, just in discharge than, than what they're using. They drop it out at several places along there, and that's, that's wonderful, but the reality, the situation is up there is that, um, they're underfunded. They have a horrendous workload, and, um, I don't know where to get them the help. Do you guys? I mean, you don't, it's not a rhetorical question, I don't expect an answer. One, two, um, you guys were, were brutally efficient at shutting down any forward motion up there, but yet I don't see anybody stepping up with any solution. And, and I know that this isn't something that's going to get solved overnight. Three, I think that it's, it's a, uh, it's a resource for the Grand County area as a bedroom community, but it's going to take, it's going to take some elbow grease. And I think it's going to take effort on you guys' behalf to try to get that, uh, get that ball rolling up there. Regretfully, you know, it, it all comes down to dollars and cents, and I hate asking government for help. But if somebody doesn't do something up there, um, we're going to see another twenty-eight months go by with very little forward motion. And, and realistically, it's, it's not doing anybody any favors. I, I love Moab, but I hate the traffic down here. And, um, I'll be back down to Thompson tomorrow for, for another meeting. I didn't even try to get a motel room down here. You know, you guys have got, you, you're going to drown in your own success, is really what it looks like. And regretfully, you guys are sitting right in the point of opportunity, and I don't know who can do what first, but man, if ever there was an opportunity-rich environment, you guys are staring at it. I don't know how much that secondary water system is going to mean, but I think, I think if you guys would ask that question, I think you'd see that there's, there's way more water up there than is going to be used anytime in the, you know, in the twenty-four to forty-eight month span. But it's like everything else, it needs management, and JR, I think, has worked himself right to, to the nub. I think that guy's, I mean, he's had it. I'm not saying he's tapping out, I'm just saying, he is, he's done a lot of paperwork, a lot of homework, and, um, and I know he thinks that he's getting a lot of pressure, but I, I really don't think he's getting a lot of pressure, I think he needs a little bit more support from you guys. I think you guys have been quick to clamp things down. Um, and he's had to answer a lot of questions to satisfy you guys and to satisfy the state. And I don't think anybody's ever done anything other than give him an attaboy for it. What he really needs is some kind of resources.
Great, okay, thank you, Jamie.
You bet.
Appreciate it. Anyone else in the chamber like to come forward and be heard at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom, uh, raise your hand, or you can, uh, unmute if you would like to make a citizen comment? All right, it looks like there are no more, so we will move on to agenda item eight, bid for essential air service, EAS, from SkyWest Airlines. And, uh, welcome Tammy Howland, our Airport Director. Hi, Tammy.
All right, so, um, what you're presented with tonight, um, it's the EAS, um, just a little explanation, if you're not familiar with that, it's essential air service. Um, Moab's been in essential air service, um, since, what, two thousand and six, I think, um. This is basically what's allowing us to have commercial air service at the airport. Um, so every, um, two to four years, um, depending on what our previous contract was, this previous contract happened to be four years, um, US Department of Transportation puts out bids, it's, um, nationwide to all the different companies that provide these services to airports, um, and ask for submissions. The county, the airport has absolutely no, um, participation in that, it's completely done by Department of Transportation, um, because it's completely one hundred percent funded by them. Um, in this, um, it gives subsidy to whoever gets this contract to provide commercial air service to communities in need. So, um, in December, uh, bids went out. Um, January, I forget the date, I'm sorry, um, when they ended. We received one bid, uh, it was SkyWest Airlines. It was not the bid that we had hoped for, um. Given the state of aviation, commercial aviation right now, uh, there's an extreme pilot shortage, which is leaving aviation, sorry, airline companies, um, struggling to succeed in stay afloat. Um, SkyWest has proposed a, um, bid that will keep them going and provide a service, um, to Salt Lake and to Denver. Um, but unfortunately, it's going to decrease our passenger load. Uh, we're going to go from fifty passengers to thirty passengers. Um, the incentive for them to do that is, is they can operate The incentive for them to do that is, is they can operate under a different category rather than a one-twenty-one airline carrier. They can be a one-thirty-five commercial operation. Which is lesser standards for pilots. Not to say that they're not as good, but it's just a lesser standard. Which is why they, they can only operate at thirty passengers. So it'd be the same aircraft we receive now. They'll just take twenty seats out and they'll operate and still have the same number of flights. Actually, we will, it looks like we'll gain more Salt Lake flights. Because this is a new contract. They'll be able to do six flights a week to Salt Lake and six flights a week to Denver. And that Salt Lake flight would then be year-round. So we don't have to have the seasonal. So that's the one benefit to this new contract. So the process now is the county commission will either endorse the letter or not. But U.S. Department of Transportation, they'll, they'll make their decision regardless. They'll take into consideration what our recommendation is. So in this letter that I drafted, the one request that I, that I made is that they limit their contract to two years. So that at the end of two years, they can reevaluate where they're at. Try to get us back up to at least fifty passengers.
Makes sense.
So there's not a whole lot we can do. The question to me always is, is well, can't we get different airlines to come in? And bottom line is, yes, we can. But Grand County would have to essentially operate like the United States Department of Transportation does and offer revenue guarantees. If you look at the price tag on that, we're looking at five and a half million dollars for this contract. So that's the bottom line, you know. We're stuck with Essential Air Service until we can grow to the point where an airline will see our market as self-sustaining. And so it's a step back, backwards. But I think that this is essential for, you know, regional carriers like SkyWest to build up their pilot fleet, you know, their pilot pool. And get back up to where the airline industry needs to be. It's nationwide. If you've been paying attention to anything going on in the news, this is a non-stop issue with all of the major airlines. So for the smaller regional carriers to keep up, they're, they're struggling to keep pilots. It's just the, the nature of the beast.
Right, yeah.
You know, once you, once if you're a pilot and you reach that point where you can go work for a big airline like Delta or United, you're going to jump ship. And so that's what SkyWest is, is struggling with along with a lot of other regional carriers like them.
Yeah, got it. Yeah, we, no, we got it, Tammy. Thank you. Any, any questions for Tammy or Mary?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
So if I understand correctly, we might have slightly more flights than we did in the past, but the planes will be smaller?
We'll have the same number of flights. It's regulated how many flights they have to provide.
Okay, but maybe more evenly distributed throughout the year so we don't
So the process, if you look at what they've proposed, it, it doesn't show the seasonal schedule. Contract has to be awarded first. And then once that's awarded, we'll come back and put in a request for the seasonal schedule like we have now. Where we have more flights during our busy time and less flights during our winter months. And doing that allows the airline to be more successful and build that market that we need to build for our community. There's no point in flying empty airplanes in the wintertime just to say we're having, you know, more flights during the wintertime. And so that's, that's the process we have to take right now is this contract gets approved first, then in conjunction with SkyWest will put in the request to DOT for the seasonal schedule like we've had in the past.
Yeah, thanks. Great, thank you. And then how, I'm I know there's, you know, with the number of claimants, there's certain thresholds that are significant, one which like might require more law enforcement out at the airport.
No, that's
Is that we're less likely to hit that threshold now or?
Yeah, we're not, yeah, so that that threshold that we thought we were, we're going to have to move towards we're now two years extended from having to do that. And the number of law enforcement is vague, how Homeland Security works at. It's really you're required, Sheriff's Department is required to provide as many sheriff's officers required to handle a situation. So if they deemed one sheriff's officer would not handle something that would happen at the airport, there's no set number on how many sheriff's officers you have to have at the airport. And, and right now, we're not required to have a sheriff's officer on site that we're not at that point yet.
Okay, great, okay.
You just have to have that agreement with them that they respond.
Okay, but whatever that threshold in the claimant says, we're, it's going to, we're not going to hit it in the next two years now?
Yeah, it's going to cushion out at least two years from July first.
Great. Mary?
I would like to make a motion. I move to approve the letter to the U.S. DOT recommending SkyWest Airlines as the Essential Air Service Provider for Canyonlands Regional Airport.
Thanks, Mary. Thanks, Kevin. All right, I have a motion by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Walker. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, I will call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. We have a couple more items here for Tammy, so we'll move on to Item Nine, Funding for Canyonlands Field Airport Rent Study to Come From the 2022 Commission Discretionary Fund.
Yeah, so this, this topic actually came before you last year. As an unplanned project. There was some confusion on the funding for that. It wasn't in the 2022 budget, but this was a project that was deemed necessary by the previous county attorney. And so I think there was just some confusion on that. And so this was the process to kind of back and when it was, when we discussed it with Chris Baird, it was brought up to, to put it before you folks.
Right, I, I think, I think it was, let's see, since it was a 2022 project and the discretionary fund still has plenty of money to cover that, that that would be a natural place for the funding to come from without having to do a budget amendment. Great.
So I move to approve the funding, excuse me, I move to approve funding the airport rent study from the 2022 Commission Discretionary Fund. Ten dash four, one, 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 dash nine, twenty, dash zero.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any other discussion on this item? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. And that one passes unanimously. One more for, or a couple more for Tammy. Number ten, Ratifying Commission's Chair Signature on a Letter and Grant Application for a Solar Project at Canyonlands Regional Airport Through the FAA.
I'm going to bring Bill Holly up to help me out with this one. Bill has done the legwork for this for the last
Hi, Bill.
I don't know, what, four or five years seems like?
Been chasing solar stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's a, a funding opportunity through the FAA. There was a January thirty-first deadline on it. This has a, had a short window. At the end of the year, they look at what pot of money they have left over and they say, okay, we're going to use it for these types of projects and put it out. So this year, that pot, that pot of money was available for sustainable energy type projects. And so we don't, you know, we've talked about a solar farm at the airport for, for many years now. Here's an opportunity maybe to get some, some grant funding. There would be roughly a ten percent match. For Grand County that hasn't been budgeted for, but we thought we'd throw the dart out there and see if we might be able to get something out for it, but Bill, go ahead and
Well, this money was part of the large amount of money that was funding built to do the renewable energy, particularly, this one was slanted towards airports in the FAA. Particularly, and a great deal of it was set aside for non-hub airports such as Harsh. And that, that money is to be used for renewable, sustainable energy and particularly for electric vehicles. And so what we did was, is we said, okay, this is perfect for us. We, to do the solar farms, we already had that in the, in the box. So we added to that eight recharging stations. That would be solar power. They would be located at the airport, which is an ideal place to put them. Either on their major highway and they're outside of the state of Utah's charging stations, which are mostly on tree bases, if you know about that program. Right. So this would allow us to add to the, add to the charging stations and actually might help us towards using, getting vehicles at the airport.
Yeah.
And certainly the rental fleets.
Right.
That are there.
Yeah.
So it's just to give you an idea of the unfunded part of it. We really, it is, it is certified and then we paid our company for the like twenty-five, twenty-seven grand a year in power bills. And so our part of this would be something, depending on how much the bid comes in for it, if we get the grant, all these are very, if you pay it would be about fifty thousand, so we would pay it back for about two years. So it's, it is technically not funded, not budgeted, but it is budgeted for our power bills.
Yeah. Great. Yeah. Thanks, Bill. Yeah, and it definitely sounds like a good idea to me. Airport seems like a no-brainer for solar and, and the more renewable energy we can get, the better.
Yeah, when we did the redesign at the building out there, it was, we paid extra to have the infrastructure in place so that when solar was available, it could just plug right into the building. So it's been a long time coming. There's not many things that you can buy that pays for itself. So
That quickly too.
Yeah.
Mary?
I move to certify the Commission's Chair Signature on a Letter and Grant Application for a Solar Project at the Airport to be Mostly Funded Through the FAA.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any further discussion or questions for Tammy and Bill? Bill?
Yeah, I'll speak to it just a little bit. I was involved in several meetings with Blackrock Power. And the reason that there cannot be a true solar farm out near the airport is because the transmission lines are already at maximum capacity. And it would take billions to change that. And that's why you see a lot of them along the freeway corridor on I-15 going north and south because they have somewhere to send that power. But his, his one recommendation is what you're doing.
Well, this recommendation is only for the empowered county units.
Exactly.
You know, the other thing that you probably don't, you may not know is is that the recharging stations we would put in would be the pay for it.
Yeah, okay, right.
It would also be revenues, be added to us as opposed to the ones that are pretty
Gotcha. That's exciting. All right. Any further discussion? I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously. All right, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Sending, item number eleven, sending the FAA application for the 2023 Airport Fencing Project, which is part of Airport Improvement Plan. Also known as the AIP. And back to Tammy.
Okay, so this is, this is a, a process we do every year. Some years several times, depending on how many projects. It's new to bringing it to you guys just to even send the application out. This is money that's already entitled to the airport. Through our entitlement program for the airport improvement program through the FAA. So this really is just the first step of this project is to send the application in. And it's not even really an app, you know, an application. It's just the start of the process for this project. These projects are already planned into the budget for matching. So really this is just permission to send the application in.
Great. Kevin?
So I move to approve this, approve sending the FAA application for the 2023 Airport Fencing Project.
Thank you. Okay, I have a motion on the table by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion or questions for Tammy? All right, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, raise your hands. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy. All right. We are on to item number twelve, Approving Public Defender Agreement. Mallory Nassau, Commission Administrator.
Yes, so the first one, as you said, is a public defender. So this individual will cover the caseload for Justice Court outside of the small percentage that the city has an attorney for district court and then felony drug court. Our prior public defender moved on to other pasture. Emery County, I believe. And so this is replacing him and it is the same amount. And this is what we had in the budget. So
Okay. All right. Mary?
So I move to approve the public defender agreement.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion on the table to approve by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Hadeen. Any other discussion or questions for Mallory?
Oh, go ahead.
I was just going to ask if they're going to be available or handling the same load as the previous. Yeah, okay, okay. I, I just wanted to say Mallory worked exceptionally fast on this. We got notice, our previous contract allowed the public defender to get out of the contract within thirty days. That is a nightmare for the court system and for defendants and everything. So Mallory worked tremendously fast to get this posted. That means a lot to a lot of people that will never come out and thank commissioners. It's a big giant deal for defendants and to be able to have comedy counsel. And then the fact I can't be, you know, even more excited than it being the same amount for the budget item. That's also impressive because our neighbors to the south, they're paying a, a good chunk for, for what they're getting. So I think it's exceptionally important. I just wanted, wanted to say how, how important it is and how quickly she moved to get this addressed. In the future contracts now, it'll have a sixty-day and a ninety-day termination notice. So it'll be a lot easier, but without her moving fast, I, I think a lot of cases would have been delayed. And those people wouldn't, you know, they would have just been really inconvenienced with the process.
Awesome. Thanks, Stephen, and kudos, Mallory. All right, any, any other questions or comments? I'll call for a vote on the motion. All those in favor, raise your hand. And that passes unanimously. We are on to approving parental defendant agreement or parental defender agreement. And back to Mallory.
Okay, and this contract is for representation for juvenile delinquency and child welfare matters as well as the Family Drug Court Program. Autumn Fitzgerald would be the parental defender and she had this contract before. We did have that lapse for a while while we were exploring options with the Indigent Defense Commission. So thankfully, Autumn is willing and able and she's very familiar with the dockets and the judges. So
All right, great. Mary?
I move to approve the parental defender agreement.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All right, motion on the table by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Winfield. Any further discussion or questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, raise your Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving, raise your hand. And the motion passes unanimously. We are on to our consent agenda. There are six items on that, including increase the enterprise lease agreement for the old Spanish trail arena, ratifying meeting request letters for the twenty twenty-three Legislative Session, ratifying Chair's signature on rural county grant B annual report fiscal year twenty twenty-two, ratification of housing authority of southeastern Utah's development block grant application, ratifying the purchase of a used Kenworth truck for Grand County roads department and modification of the grand cooperative agreement operating and financial plan between Grand County and USDA Anti-Lasalle National Forest.
Move to approve ASBRED.
Thank you. All right, I have a motion to approve consent agenda by Commissioner McGinn and a second by Commissioner Clapper. Any discussion of consent items? Bill?
I've just got one thing I want to make a note on, and that's the letters to all the representatives and senators that you're sending out. It seems just a little bit verbally like we're not asking for this site. That we're telling them we're taking it. I mean, it's not stated quite like that, but it just seems a little bit. I just hope the perception isn't received by your representatives that way because it's, it just eventual transfer, we're not asking them for this land. We're saying that it's just coming to us. And that that's my only point on those letters that I've got.
Okay. Any other, thanks, Bill, any other comment? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote for the approval of consent agenda. All those in favor. And the motion passes unanimously. All right, we are on to public hearings. And this is, let me see. Pull that up. Four Corners Community Behavioral Health public hearing and actually, I know this is something we do every year, correct?
Yeah.
Not a hundred percent sure how I go about opening this.
I think just floor to Melissa.
So I'm on Zoom. Oh, okay, Melissa's on Zoom. Oh, gotcha. I should have checked. Sorry, Melissa. Please, go ahead.
I apologize. I know the visual is not that good. I'm sitting in my car, so I was just kind of been listening to the commission meeting, waiting for my turn. So I apologize, but yeah, so this is a public hearing that we do in each of the counties that Four Corners covers. And as you know, Four Corners is the the county contracted local authority that provides substance abuse treatment and mental health treatment for the citizens of Grand County. And and part of our responsibility in that is to come once a year to each of the counties and allow for public comments on any comments or questions that anyone might have with regards to our services. And so that's why we're here today. And I don't know if you want to me to give you a brief overview of Four Corners or if you guys kind of feel like you know what we do, but we provide the mental health and substance abuse outpatient services and help get people linked to inpatient services, either hospitalization or residential treatment. And we provide housing for clients and clubhouse services. So we do a lot of stuff, including the crisis that we provide twenty-four hours a day at the in each of our three counties, including Grand County. So I guess if there's, do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you, Melissa. Yeah, I'm acquainted, very well acquainted with with what you all do and very much appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Melissa? So with the with the public hearing, I opened the public hearing and then we solicit comment. Is this an item that I that we bring back up at a future meeting or?
I think it's typically, this is a space for them to hold their hearing.
Okay.
And so it's just a a public forum for other community members to show up. And I think typically we close the hearing and sign something saying that it happened and
Got it, right.
Then they take that from there.
Okay, so now I would go about opening the public hearings, listening comment, and then after that, we can close the hearing.
I don't, how would you like it, Melissa? Would you like us to keep it open for a week or would you like us to close it and say it happened tonight?
Yeah, generally, generally with, in my experience, it just opens and closes in the same night because we publish that it's going to be happening. So we've given citizens an opportunity to come and speak. And and I we, my executive assistant should have sent over the form to one of the commission members to sign.
I do, I do, Melissa, I have that form in front of me, yes.
Okay, perfect, perfect, okay.
And I think the comments submitted would be for Four Corners, not for Grand County.
Right.
And that's kind of what.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll open this public hearing for comments to Four Corners Community Behavioral Health Incorporated. Is there anyone present who would like to make a comment? Do we have anybody online who would like to make a comment on Zoom? And would we have gotten any comments by email or electronic means? Okay, apparently not.
All the good work. Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
This is not the first time that, you know, we've come and no one's really had any comments to make. And, you know, no news is good news sometimes, so we're just out there working hard, so.
All right, thank you. I will now I'll now close this public hearing and we'll we'll get your documents signed and back to you. Thanks, Melissa.
Thank you so much.
Okay. All right, that brings us to the end of our regularly scheduled or actually, I'm sorry, you're right, Mary. I would entertain a motion to go into closed session and the reasons why.
I move to go into closed session to discuss purchase, exchange, lease, or sale of real property and pending or reasonable intimate litigation.
Second.
All right, any discussion? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of going into closed session for the stated reasons. And the motion passes five to nothing with Commissioner Hadeen absent. Okay.